It is.
Oh, is that, uh...well, from my angle, it's like... And we can start?
I'd like to call this meeting to order of the regular Board of Trustees meeting for Henry Ford College. First item, please.
Roll call. Hussein Barry here. Fadwa Hamoud will be here any minute. Mary Lane.
Here.
Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Pachikoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
And Chair Michael Mead.
Here. Second item, next item, please.
Approval of minutes, recommended action. Move to approve the minutes of the Henry Ford College Policy Committee meeting and the regular Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting held on May 21st, 2018.
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes.
Page nine, under item number eight, line seven. I'd like to have some wording that I took exactly verbatim from the YouTube video added. Line number seven says, "Vice President Nealon replied that this position was requested in October, however, it is now just being filled." The video, it says, there's a little bit longer explanation. It says that it was posted, it was requested in October. There was some kind of confusion with HR. And then it says, quotation, "It was just posted last month." And I'd like that to be added after it is. It was just posted last month and is now being filled. So that is one correction. I'd like to put forward another correction where it says Majid Fadlala, early college principal, was included in the selection committee. Vice President Nealon said exactly at part four of the meeting videos, 19 minutes, 53 seconds. We did have Majid Fadlala sit with us when we interviewed the finalists. So he was not on the committee. He was invited in for a meeting. So I'd like to have those two corrections made. Those are verbatim from the YouTube.
Okay. Any other corrections? All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
There comes a young man to do this job. He's got the right hat on.
Thank you, Dr. Glass, Chair Mead, and members of the board. My name is Christian Moore. I am a second-year student at Henry Ford College. After my first semester here, I decided I wanted to major in Architecture and Construction. My plan is to get both architectural degrees that HFC offers and then transfer to a university to pursue my bachelor's degree. Since my start at HFC, I have made the dean's list, been invited to join the honor society, worked on campus each semester, and have now been elected to student council. Now I am pleased to read this month's HFC's board acknowledgements. Ms. Aura Kazars, Student Conduct and Compliance Title IX Coordinator, was reappointed to First Lady Snyder's Work Group to End Campus Domestic Violence. Ms. Kazars was part of the first work group last year and participated in development of the Let's End Campus Sexual Assault book, printed in English, Arabic, and Spanish, along with the resource website. On June 2nd, Henry Ford College through the Consortium of Michigan Veterans Educators, participated in the first annual Michigan Student Veteran Leadership Symposium. This was an event for veterans planned by veterans. Objectives for this event included, one, collective encouragement, two, personal development, and three, professional networking. Seventy-eight people attended and made the event a great success. Diane Ebert, Support Staff and Counseling, received the Michigan's Occupational Special Populations Association, MOSPA, Outstanding Staff Award. Ms. Ebert coordinated American Sign Language interpreters who work with hearing impaired students and staff, selects new adaptive equipment to help students, and works on budgeting time for inside track mentors, ALS testing technicians, and hospitality technicians. In addition, she's responsible for compiling ALS data to support the Perkins Grant. HFC students Ali Hadar, Ragad Al Said, and Walah Salain have accepted paid summer research internships at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor as part of the Institutional Research and Academic Career Development Award. Grant that also brings post-doc fellows to our campus. Last year, three students reported that this was a life-changing experience. All the best to these students and their summer adventure. HF student Abdrahman Al Museli completed his first summer of research at the University of Detroit Mercy in 2017 and will be returning this summer. The rebuild grant from the National Institute of Health provides full tuition and partial support for students who are selected for summer research and subsequently transferred to U of D Mercy. Nice work, Abdrahman. That concludes the acknowledgements.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, action items. First one is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. I don't have any blue cards.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is special consideration of an action item. Other than action item number six, are there any other action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the action below.
I had one question on number three.
Trustee Thorpe.
But it doesn't need to be full.
Okay. Anybody else? Trustee Lane?
I'd just like to thank the college for going ahead with parking lot and sidewalk repairs. Those are really important things to do, and I'm glad to see we're doing maintenance and not waiting like the state has done on the roads. So it's a good move. I appreciate it.
Good remark. Anybody else? Trustee Thorpe, item three.
Let me...
Mo, do you have to read?
Yeah.
Recommended action. Move to approve action items numbered one through five as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support?
It has been moved and supported, but all these items be approved except item three, right?
Not except, just a question on item.
Including.
Just a discussion.
Including three. Do we need to discuss that then now?
Yes.
At this point, you do that, yes.
The question I've got is that the bid that we're looking to move forward with is with Veritiv for $175,000, but when I'm looking at the bid award, it says the total's $186,000. So I'm just wondering why the difference?
When we issued the bid for the custodial supplies, which includes chemicals, cleaning products, and paper, we included a number of alternate products so that we could select, you know, between different parents, select the one that we prefer the most that gives us the best value. So the bid results are higher than what the actual award will be because we'll be excluding some of those alternatives that we kept.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion? All that's been moved and seconded for all of the action items? No?
One through five.
One through five.
Six.
Except six.
Fill in the blank.
All those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Now we need to...
Going back to number six. Certification of appointments of 2018, 2019, MCCA Board of Directors. Recommended action is move to approve the designation of the following as representative to the MCCA Board of Directors for the year 2018, 2019. Dr. Michael Mead as trustee director and trustee Celia Nasser as alternate trustee director and Mr. Russell A. Cavelluna as president.
So moved.
Support?
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of...
Let me do a roll call vote, please.
It's a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Hussein Barry, yes. Fadwa Hamoud.
Yes.
Mary Lane.
Yes.
Celia Nasser.
Yes.
Mary Pachikoff.
Yes.
James Thorpe.
Yes.
And Chair Michael Mead.
Here. Ah, yes.
Yes, you're here.
Ah, yes, I am. The next item, please.
Next item is Board of Trustees Business. First item is acknowledgment of correspondence.
No. Okay. Next item.
Second item is Board Committee Reports.
The Audit Committee met just before coming up here, and we met with Plant Moran, who will be doing the audit for us. We are in the interim phase currently. We'll have draft statements by the October meeting at the completion of the audit.
Very good. Any other committee meeting reports? Next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Lane?
Dr. Maleko could add to this, but I do want to report to the rest of the board that apparently it's passed the Michigan Senate unanimously that there is an amendment to be made to the Open Meetings Act, allowing boards such as ours to meet in closed session to address security issues. Dr. Maleko could give us more information. He met with State Senator David Kinesic, and I think there is now a House bill.
Yeah, so basically, it was my regular meeting that I have with the state representatives of senators. We schedule them every two to three months to talk about different issues, and he was happy to mention to me, and it was based on, he actually kind of called it the Trustee Lane.
Ah, good. It should be the Trustee Lane bill.
Yeah, and so it was kind of neat that he said he was pushing it through and that it would be, and he said it made sense, it was common sense, and that it's hopefully to go through the House of Representatives as well. And he always appreciates input and ideas. We came up with a few other things, and we had a lot of, we had a really positive meeting, so we decided, I said, well, let's call trustee Lane, we'll have her voice, and just to let her know that he's been working on it. So I think that's a real positive. It's a no-brainer. It's common sense that you wouldn't want to be discussing safety and security in an open meeting to let anyone who wants to know what your techniques are and things. So that's kind of where it's at, so hopefully it'll go through.
Well, our appreciation to you, trustee Lane.
Well, I'd like to thank the rest of the board. Dr. Maleko, of course, we've been proactive on safety issues. We were out in front of a lot of the issues, and I think that's been to our advantage. It's worked well, so.
Well, thank you.
It's just another thing that we...
Yes.
Since we're on that topic too, I just want to remind the board and everyone that we have that drill that we're doing tomorrow at William Ford. And so the board can expect to get a notice from me, but understand that it's going to be, because we want to do everything we do, whether that be through text or incident, but understand that this incident...
Oh, it's the drill notice.
It's a drill. I'll make sure I put drill, but we want to, I'll be there getting interviewed. They don't want me there until 10:45. Board trustees are welcome to observe if they want to go. They don't want me there early because they want me to go in the time that I would probably get there, which would mean when the press gets there. But the drill is actually, I believe it's going to start around 8:30. It's going to go from 8:30. So we're doing an active shooter drill. They called it something else, and they put it out in the press, but I just want everyone to know. And we've been playing this for about a year, actually, prior to any of the shootings. So I just wanted to mention that, since this is kind of timely with the school safety legislation.
Well, it's a very important drill. Thank you very much for putting it together. Yes, trustee Lane?
I have another one.
Sure.
We were given information on the president's update on legal costs for presidential search and stipends. I'm unclear what that actually means. So I understand that there were two, maybe three persons who were given stipends, financial stipends, for additional workload that was, that they willingly undertook during the presidential search. I don't know whether all persons were given, all persons who did that, including Vice President Chadwick. I don't know whether all persons were compensated or just two, or, I mean, obviously interim President Zetkowski is one person. I believe Mr. Cunningham might be another person. I know that some people undertook additional work. And I don't, and when this is titled stipends, I don't know whether, I'm assuming that that, those stipends are not included in this. So I would like some kind of either explanation or memo on what we foresee for legal issues. We have a legal firm that works, does work for us, and we also have a staff attorney, and she has an assistant. So I'd like an overview about, you know, who does what. Mr. Tuckles, so far as we recognize recently, did presidential search, but this $15,000, I'm assuming that those are his costs, and that's to review the contract stipends rather than this $15,000 is everything. But I don't know that, I don't know that from this discussion. And then when you go to page seven and eight, I mean, there's a list of bullet points, but what they mean, I don't know. So perhaps we can have some further explanation. I would like to know what are total legal costs right now for the college.
For this particular issue?
No, I'm assuming that the $15,000 is the legal cost for the review of the presidential contract, and Kathy is saying yes, so. So that's one thing. But I'd like to know overall, what are our legal costs running per annum? And then, you know, how does that break down? How much is it done in-house? I know that we, as the policy committee, have met with Ms. Clark and Ms. Di Matteo, and I know that they're doing some work. They do review of contracts, but I don't know who all does what. So I'd like to have an overview. And then, secondly, I'd like to urge that we do an RFP right now, since I've been on this board, which has been since time memorial, at least in my mind. I don't recall us doing an RFP for legal services. We need to do an RFP to assure that we're getting good value for our money. We've had the same legal firm, and they've served us, but I think it's time, and we're overdue to do an RFP for legal services.
Okay. Any...
I'd like to add to that. I asked something similar last year, and I was serving on the Finance Committee, and I was told that at the K through 12 side, we're under contract. Are we, I guess the question becomes, are we under contract with the current legal firm?
I believe it's been the board appointed but so long, way before I got here. And then it's been, it's, well, more than 18 years ago. So then it's been a rolling kind of a thing that has been an RFP that I'm aware of since that initial...
I know we did, okay, I know we did one at K through 12 about six years ago, maybe a little longer.
I know Jim and I were still on the board back then, so yeah, had to have been at least.
'09, '10, something like that, yeah. Do these contracts have a rolling clause?
I've never seen it, so I can't speak to it.
Okay. Yeah, okay. We need to look into it, you know? That's a good idea. I mean, I respect trustee Lane for bringing that up. You always want to sharpen the pencil.
Trustee?
I read in the paper over the weekend, and if my memory is serving me correctly, that there is a bill going through the House or the Senate that they, to no longer raid the school aid fund for post-secondary funding. So as we move into having conversation about a millage renewal, we may want to have some conversation and keep our eye on where that bill goes, because funding for the community college then may be impacted.
Correct.
By that particular legislation.
Very good.
I have something else. Mine is a fun one. No offense, trustee Lane.
No, no.
But I spent the morning, I spent the morning, anytime we're talking with, I got to be careful, I got a lawyer in the room, so I'll just stop right there. And I spent, I spent the morning with my grandson at a college just northwest of here. I don't ask, community college, I don't have to mention a name, give them advertisement, but it was, it was a really nice basketball camp. And the coaches from that college and some of the players were there, and about 40 young kids, elementary age. And the question is, do we do something like that at this college? Do we reach out to the community? And when the kids got settled, I started wandering around, looking for trouble, I guess. And I asked at the counter, I said, you know what? For the last couple hours I've been here, a lot of senior citizens have been walking in and out. You have like a special program? And the young lady looked at me, she says, senior citizens are lifelong learners. I'm like, okay, lifelong learners, which they do. I guess, I guess during downtime, they open up the fitness center for them. Every morning, they open up the basketball gym. Do we do any of that? I guess would become the question.
We do do summer camps. We have a program out of workforce development. Michael Nealon could probably speak to that. Perhaps?
Yeah. We have, Pat's not here.
Doesn't have to be tonight. We can wait.
Sure, we can.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm okay with that, yeah.
Henry has eight to 10 separate camps that we run over the summer. Everything from STEM, so people who might be, and we're especially targeting underrepresented student populations, so young ladies that might be interested in STEM field. We have the culinary. As far as having a basketball camp, I'll have to look into that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good way to get...
What's that? Baseball and volleyball are the two that we do.
And these are well marketed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. I guess under that same thought, I know we offer a discount, a huge discount for our senior citizens to take classes at Henry Ford College.
They're free. It's free.
I was reminded that...
It's a real big discount.
Whoa, 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 slow down, slow down. I was reminded that classes are free, but then the fees and what have you. So it's not completely free. It's discounted 60% or something. I would just like to see how many, how many, you know, people take advantage of the community. I guess it's one way to reach out to the community and give back, so if it's a big number, I would like to see it advertised someplace to, hey, yeah, we are doing something out to the community. Okay, our goal was 7:35, so I'll just shut up right now. Trustee Fadwa, huh?
No, thank you. Those are all great questions, but, and I wanted to echo trustee Lane's comments as well. I had originally requested that information as to our legal fees and to the stipends. And I was kind of surprised to not see some names on there as well. So I would appreciate an explanation. I do think it would be, it would be wise to now do an RFP for legal counsel. I, looking at some of the numbers even in the past, not going to say they brought up concerns, but I think it's important, like trustee Barry said, to just sharpen, sharpen up our pencils. I did just come back from Boston, and as some of you may know, I had the privilege and unique opportunity to participate in a program over at Harvard Business School. I would love to tell you all about it and hopefully do a brief presentation at some point, where I attended the program with brilliant minds from all over the nation that I was really, I was shocked that I was even part of them. But one of the issues that we discussed specifically for Detroit was our infrastructure. And the M-1 rail, if you remember, came out, they campaigned in front of us all. And one thing that I hope to present on, one thing that really struck me, an issue that is prevalent all around the nation, was whether it's infrastructure or education, there is a huge racism problem in this country. There really is. And it affects our roads, it affects our education system, and many, many, many other things. And dissecting the infrastructure, public transit for the city of Detroit, and realizing how apparent race was in the middle of it all, was shameful. And it made us realize we have a long way to go. And the way that we change that is through education, and is to make sure that we provide everyone with the best education, education that is inclusive and diverse and whatever that means. But that is on us, and I think that we're doing, hopefully, our part in that, but I do think that we still have a long way to go. So I look forward to talking to you all about my experience at some point.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that. Something very intriguing. Trustee Lane?
Would it be more appropriate here? I mean, we have infrastructure needs, obviously, at both locations. I don't know which is your thinking of.
Well, you know what? That was just one of the topics. I was going to concentrate on the education aspect of it around the nation. Community colleges were also a big topic. And, oh, you mean, you mean what, the presentation here or the...
Presentation for your potential.
But if any of you have any questions about some of the topics, you feel free to call me and...
I think she means whether you should make the presentation at P-12 or at the college. Or both. Okay. I like both.
She's got to really put a dynamic fireball of a presentation together then.
Yeah. And she's capable.
Yeah, she's capable. I'm just a little discouraged when, when I think that we had Jim Crow laws up until very recently, and we fought a civil war more than 150 years ago. We're still struggling with racism and issues on immigration. It's pretty discouraging to me, and I think that the human species maybe evolves slower than any other species, because we haven't made a whole lot of progress, and we have free public education in the United States. So I just feel that we should have made better progress, but we haven't really done so great.
But look at Flint.
But we have great opportunities here at Henry Ford College because we have super diversity, and we have a great opportunity to educate an awful lot of people that need the education.
To open our minds.
Well, of course.
We need to be open to change, because change is inevitable, and we will have to change. But it's hard for us to do. It's, it's easy to cling to the old and, and not change.
Okay. Any other requests for information and/or future agenda items? Next item, please.
Board member commentary?
I think we had some.
Yeah.
Does anybody wish to continue? Yes, trustee Lane?
Dr. Mead, I know you've been asking us about special meetings.
Yes.
So I wanted you to, I hope it's not on here, so I wanted you to address that if you would.
Okay. So I'm asking for the board to meet July 16th at 7:00 PM to discuss the millage. And so far, I think we have everybody on board. I just didn't know about...
I will be there.
Okay. So we will all plan to meet here at 7:00 on July 16th, and the topic is primarily the millage. Yes?
To prepare myself, I have been asking people how they feel about it.
Okay.
So, you know, I've asked some of my neighbors and some politicians, so I would urge everyone else to do the same and to give it a lot of thought, but to talk about it and...
Okay.
Educate ourselves.
All right.
Let's, let's prepare for it. I know we'll be given information, but we need to prepare ourselves as best as possible because it's a, it's an important decision, and it's, it's a decision that I know we'll struggle with, so. Better prepared, better decision.
Anybody else? Okay. Future, oops, next item, please.
Next item, future meeting dates. Monday, June 25th, 2018, P through 12, Board of Education meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom. Monday, July 16th, that's the meeting that trustee Lane and Dr. Mead are referring to. Monday, July 16th, at the Henry Ford Board of Trustees meeting, 7:00 PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Then we have Monday, July 23rd, 2018, P through 12, Board of Education meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom. That's a tongue twister. Then we have Monday, August 13th, 2018, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting, 7:00 PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. And our last one scheduled here is Monday, August 20th, 2018, P through 12, Board of Education meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom.
And August is the month that we flip.
Yes.
The college comes, yeah.
Yes.
Just so everybody's aware.
And... That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, but we've been reminded, June 25th, we're supposed to be there at 5:15.
It's for a closed...
For a closed session, 5:15, on the, on the 25th of June in the P-12. Potentially, could still change. Okay. So look for your emails. Hey, we're adjourned.
Look at the grants.
Did you bet?
Yeah, what did you say?
There is no proof.
Remember the word? Remember the words?
It was recorded. Remember?